I will call the regular session of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwert? Here. White?
Here.
Felkka?
Here. We will now have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion. So, the agenda is proposed or amended. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. We have an agenda. Public comments. Does anybody in the boardroom want to provide public comment? There are some agenda items coming up where I know there's going to be comment. But do we have anybody outside the agenda items in the boardroom that would like to provide comment? Do we have anyone on Zoom or on the phone that would like to provide public comment? We have none. Claims and payments. Mr. Perry?
This week's expenditures totaled $566,680.43, of which $134,128 sheriff's department, $22,843 maintenance, $221,946 for secondary roads, $19,464 jail commissary, and finally $68,867 Grundy Road. Everything looked normal.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the expenditures? We have a motion and a second. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwert?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Felkka?
Yes. Item number four, project updates from department heads and elected officials. Kathy?
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer.
Morning.
Want to give you a brief update on one of the projects. This is the East Gresham Road Bridge Project. We were scheduled to go there on the bus tour, but we didn't get that far that day. So I just have three quick photos I wanted to show you. So this is showing the substructure is complete on this structure now. It's approximately 209, 206-foot-long bridge. The new bridge is that long. It consists of the abutment that you see right here in the foreground and then three piers and then the last abutment over there on the east side. Next slide, Kim. So currently, the contractor is installing piles so that they can build their false work. Next slide, Kim. And false work is to, holds up the concrete as it's curing. So the concrete, excuse me, so the contractor will be building essentially another bridge. There will be plywood and formwork that will hold up the concrete that is poured between the new piers and that will cure and for about seven days. And then the contractor will come in and remove all of the false work. This should be taking place probably towards the end of the week or early next week. If you would be interested in seeing this, the deck pour, I welcome that. Please let me know and we can get you out there to see that work. And then just one other thing I wanted to mention is that I have set up a meeting to discuss ATV and UTV discussions here with other department heads and some of you as well for the end of the month. And I will be keeping you posted. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads in the boardroom? Do we have any department heads or elected officials on Zoom that would like to provide an update? All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from August 3, 2021.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Item number six is the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwert?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Felkka?
Yes. Item 7A is a motion to approve and execute a waiver and consent for operation of livestock facility for Chad and Sheila, even, at property locally addressed at 8319 Fox Road, Jessup. Specifically, there is an existing livestock operation at this location within the 100-foot setback from the county right of way. Owners are preparing a manure management plan, and as part of this process, the Department of Natural Resources requires the county to execute a waiver of the setback. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Item 7B is a motion to receive and place and file the Blackhawk County Extension 007 Reconciliation Statement, affidavits and published report Agriculture Extension Education Operating Fund, July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021.
So move.
Second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The next item is a motion that the appointment of Michael J. Butler to the Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs Commission be approved effective August 10, 2021, with the term ending on June 30, 2024.
So move. Second.
Yolando?
Good morning, Board. Yolando Lovelace, Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs. I just wanted to have an opportunity to welcome aboard Mike Butler to Blackhawk County Veterans Commission. I think the commission got it right. Mike Butler has an extensive background in just doing veteran projects in the Cedar Valley area. In particular, he's very active in the VFW, very active in AmVets Pulse 49, very active with our commission. And so, Mike Butler, you know, I'd kid him because he's married to another veteran. His wife was a Navy nurse and he was an enlisted guy. So something was going on there because you can't get away with that now. But we want to welcome what we call a superstar to our board who's going to really bring us to a new light as we move into 2023, 2024. I just wanted to welcome him aboard and to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to select such a veteran as Mike.
Would Mike like to say anything?
I'm hoping I'm thanking you for accepting me. I'm a Vietnam vet. I was there toward the end of Vietnam. I was on a 25-foot-tall ship and we flew support for a lot of guys like Craig White when they're running around in the rush. But I have been here for 40-some years and really enjoy the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Butler.
I don't know if you knew it or not, too. We did receive an email from Mr. Hagerty from the Cedar Falls Post supporting the appointment. So I thought you should know that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Welcome aboard, Mr. Butler. 7D is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing bid opening to be held at 9:05 a.m. on Tuesday, August 31, 2021.
So move.
Second.
In Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed purchase of one lowboy trailer for the Blackhawk County Engineers' Office. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Item 7E is a motion that the personal requisition for the temporary account specialist, part-time, in the county engineer's office, starting August 11, 2021, and ending October 2, 2021, with a total cost of $1,794.40, be approved as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer. It's been moved and seconded. Kathy?
Yeah. On Monday, our previous account specialist moved down to the treasurer to take a position there. The position is still open for another three or four days. So we'll be without an account specialist for probably three or four weeks. That's just how long the process takes. So we're anticipating that there would be a slight overlap of maybe two weeks towards the end of this temporary person's time with us. She's only going to be with us two hours a day. So I would ask that we be allowed to hire her. She'll be very helpful with keeping up with some of the accounts receivable, accounts payable, the bills that we receive in the mean, in this interim time between we, before we get a new permanent position.
Any questions for Kathy?
I'm assuming, obviously, you're planning on the funding from that coming from the position being vacant as well.
Exactly. Yes.
Right. Using some of that. Thank you.
Are they going to be, he or she going to be able to get the work done in that few of hours every day?
I don't know if we, we're basically not having the person do the entire job. The person just wanted to come in and volunteer, actually, for a few hours a day. And we suggested this arrangement. So we're just hoping to, we can keep up with the bills so that our vendors get paid. That's really one of our main reasons for doing this.
Previous employee, isn't it?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Item 7F is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 a.m. on Tuesday, August 24, 2021, in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed ordinance number 77-255 from a request submitted by Tim and Cindy Vogel to rezone 2.5 acres from A agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district at 741 South Ordway Road in order to construct one new single-family home. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Item 7G is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:07 a.m. on Tuesday, August 24, 2021, in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed ordinance number 77-256 from a request submitted by Dustin Cox to rezone 1.55 acres from A agricultural district to AR agricultural rural, agricultural residential district at 8515 Winslow Road in order to construct one new single-family home. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Item 7H is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:09 a.m. on Tuesday, August 24, 2021, in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed ordinance number 77-257 from a request submitted by Harold and Marilyn Even to rezone 1.504 acres from A agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district.
So move.
Second. At 4316 McStay Road in order to split off a home built in, home built on 35 acres. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Item number 7I is a resolution that the minor plat of survey submitted by Gary and Lynette Howell to minor plat 4.15 acres located at south of 9503 Taylor Road in order to construct one new single-family home. The property in question is located approximately 2,500 feet south of the Taylor Road and West Marquee Road intersection. And if approved, that the county auditor be directed to certify a copy of this resolution for the Blackhawk County Recorder. Seth?
Okay. Yeah. This is just a request to plat 4.15 acres in order to construct one new single-family home. It was moved by AG and seconded by Sage to approve the request to plat 4.15 acres in order to construct one new single-family home. The property was approved for a rezone from A agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district on June 15, 2021 by the Board of Supervisors. Yeah. The immediate area primarily consists of Sullivan acre subdivision trees, farm land rural homes. The surrounding area is owned A agricultural district and AR agricultural district, the north, south, east, and west. Yeah. The technical review committee didn't have any concerns in regards to this request.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwert?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Felkka?
Yes. Item 7J is a resolution that the minor plat of surveys submitted by Matthew Hardig to minor plat 2.48 acres located at north of 10409 Bishop Road in order to construct one new single-family home. The property in question is located approximately 2,000 feet northwest of the Bishop Road and Shepherd Road intersection.
So move.
Second. And if approved, that the county auditor be directed to certify a copy of this resolution for the Blackhawk County Recorder. Seth?
Yeah. This is a basically used to request to plat 2.48 acres in order to construct one new single-family home. It was moved by Sage and seconded by Nagle to approve the request to plat 2.48 acres in order to construct one new single family home. Motion approved unanimously. Property was approved for rezone from A agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district by the Board of Supervisors at the regular meeting on June 15, 2021. The site was previously zoned agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in November 18, 1982. The technical review committee didn't have any issues with this particular request either.
Any other comments or questions for Seth? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwert?
Yes.
Felkka?
Yes. Item 7K is a motion to sign and send a letter of support to Intercog for a REAP grant request funding the Cedar River Improvements Project in Cedar Falls, Iowa.
So move. Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, hey, Mike? Mike, would you like to add comment? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Item 7L is a motion to sign and send a letter of support to Intercog for a REAP grant request funding Crane Creek Enhancements in Dunkerton, Iowa.
So move.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. It is approved. Item 7M is a motion to sign and send a letter of support to Intercog for a REAP grant request funding the Greenbelt Lake Improvements Phase II in Waterloo, Iowa.
So move. Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Item 7N is a motion to approve the Health Department offering flu vaccines to county employees.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Dr. Inmonier?
Good morning. Dr. Inmonier, Blackhawk County Health Department. I just want to clarify that funding from this will be coming from the Health Department budget for the purchase of the flu vaccines. And that's approximately about $2,100 or so. Could be a little bit more, but it's.
How much?
$2,100 something. But I will also follow up with an email.
We didn't do this last year, did we?
No. Last year is the only year we didn't do it.
Before. Do you know the numbers? Because I think we were told it was dropping off every year.
So in 2019, it was $2,193.3.
The number of people in the vaccine.
Yes. It was, it's, yeah, last year, 2019, was the only year that it dropped a bit. Yeah.
But I'm saying prior to that, okay.
Yeah. Prior to that, and I think that's where we realized that some employees wanted to have their shots here. And so, and we don't charge that administration fee that they, the insurance charges when they go outside.
Yeah. I have no problem with that. But for the record, I want to make sure everybody knows that it is covered for free on their insurance. So.
Yes. But we get, we get, the county gets charged, though, administrative fee.
I'm talking about when they go to the pharmacy and get it. It's free on the insurance.
Yes. Yes. That's true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Number 7O is a resolution to approve the purchase of laptop computers through the Iowa State Office of the Chief Information Officer for up to the maximum total purchase amount of all computers of $9,500.
So move.
Using CARES Act grant funds in that same amount, all according to the terms and conditions of the CARES Act and this specific grant, as recommended by Kim Veder, IT Director.
Yeah. So in this program, they provided a list of five different laptops and webcam that you could pick from. And you could, some of the packets had docking stations and wireless keyboards and that kind of thing. So you couldn't go over the $9,500 and you couldn't add to it to increase it. So in looking at the combinations for our best to get as close to the $9,500 for that, we're going to go ahead and get seven different laptops and then docking stations with one of them and then one webcam. So there's only four things that we need to make sure that we do. And one of them is to say that this isn't anything that would have been budgeted last fiscal year, which obviously it can't be, that it's bought between the year that it started and the end of this year and that we're not getting money from another source to pay for the same thing. And then these laptops will be going to people that have desktops now, so they'll be able to work from home if they need to.
Is this the first, I mean, obviously because of the CARES Act, but this is the first time they've offered this?
Right. Right. So it just became official August 2nd. Is, the timeframe is August 2nd through August 15th. I just heard about it in the last month. So.
Any other comments or questions for Kim? Although, or Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwert?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Felkka?
Yes. Item 7P is a discussion possible board action in regard to the Second Amendment. And I did put this on the agenda several months ago. I was at a meeting in Hudson and I was approached by Austin and several others and they asked about a resolution or some sort of action reaffirming the rights of gun owners. I don't think it should be a surprise for anybody where I stand on this issue because I've made it clear for years that I'm a law-abiding gun owner and I just, I enjoy the rights I have in regard to my guns and I don't want them to be infringed upon at all. On the flip side, I know there are some communities like in Texas where they're passing ordinances where people have to own guns. I don't believe in that either because we have to be responsible gun owners and there needs to be reasonableness. So I was approached by Austin recently with this resolution, a resolution that other counties had passed, especially Harden County. And I said, we'll talk to the sheriff and talk to the other board members. And, and I said, I would support this and I would get it on the agenda for discussion of possible board action. And I told Austin I'd give him an opportunity to speak and there are some others that might want to speak to this issue as well. So, Mr. Habberly, the floor is yours.
Good morning. Austin Habberly, I'm at 2520 Melrose. So I had the pleasure of speaking with most of you on the phone already. I'm simply a concerned citizen here today just to have a dialogue about Second Amendment rights in Blackhawk County. Most of what I say is from my individual point of view as a resident here. Back in July, the Republicans passed a resolution to discuss with the board and sheriff the idea of Second Amendment sanctuary here in Blackhawk. For the record, this idea has been endorsed by Sandy Salmon, Craig Johnson, Dustin Ganfield, and Todd Maxon, who did not make it today. The resolution requesting the sentiments of Second Amendment rights that the Republicans passed reads as follows. So they would like something along these lines. We would like the board to declare our county as a Second Amendment sanctuary county in order that any action, act, law, treaty, executive order, rule, regulation, edict, administrative order, court order, court rule, statute, resolution, ordinance, or anything alike from any federal, state, or local entity that violates the right of the people to keep and bear arms is null, void, and unenforceable in this county. So I'm not a, I'm not an attorney, but the supervisors in Harden County did pass a Second Amendment resolution that was crafted by attorneys. I met with the sheriff of Blackhawk County. It's good to see you, Tony. And I showed him that resolution, the Harden County resolution. And he, I don't want to put words in his mouth too much, but he, he did indicate to me that he would support that language of Harden County. So I do ask you to examine Harden County's resolution and make it our own. Really, this is nothing more than affirming the oaths already taken to uphold the Second Amendment rights of citizens in our county. I think I would, well, committing to the Second Amendment sanctuary from federal unconstitutional acts is really what this is about. And I think it would show this county that you care about their protection and that you understand that it's a universal civil right that transcends any differences in people groups. It is our duty as, as citizens of Blackhawk to approach this board with requests, after which it's the board's duty to secure if they so choose. We are here today because, again, we care about the fundamental civil rights of everyone here. I believe I speak on behalf of the citizens here when I say that we want to know that we can count on the supervisors to protect us from federal actions that infringe the right of the people to keep and bear arms. We want to know that your office will uphold the Constitution that you've been elected and sworn to support. Our sheriff and our board both have a really valuable role to interact with people and protect them by being directly elected by the local population. You know, this is, this board is elected directly to give us a voice directly and to keep accountable other, other bodies of government that are not. Again, I repeat, we do not want federal unconstitutional acts being enforced here. And I fully believe that the oaths taken by this board enable you to do so. I do want to add, since training requirements for concealed carry permits were just lifted by the state, in conjunction with affirming our Second Amendment rights in this county, I think this board could also use a resolution like this to publicly promote firearms training and also mental health awareness. And again, since the sheriff was in favor of the Harden County resolution, making that one our own, we really hope that you pass something similar to Harden County's resolution, affirming your oaths to the Constitution by supporting our civil rights in Blackhawk. I've got a couple other colleagues who I think would like to make a few other points if you don't mind, but I would be open for.
If they're saying the same thing, we only need to hear it once.
They have quite a few different variety.
First thing I want to do is ask, how many of you that are here are military, former military? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions at the end I'd be glad to answer, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Your name and address.
Craig Gingrich, Ward 1, resident Cedar Falls. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to, to speak up and support the Second Amendment. I'm here as a concerned citizen because the Second Amendment seems to be, you know, kind of in question at times and people are trying to weaken it across the country. We must stand up and guard this important constitutional right or we could lose it. My part concerns the Constitution, which has stood the test of time and firearms have certainly been instrumental in preserving our individual rights, freedom, and security. The Second Amendment reads, quote, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to secure, to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." To understand the intent of these words, we need to only examine Sam Johnson's Sixth Edition Dictionary, which was published six years before the Second Amendment was ratified. Infringe means to violate or hinder. The word arms means weapons of offense, so it does not only apply to regular muskets. The word keep means to retain or have in the house. And in case there is any confusion, the word militia, according to 10 U.S. Code, Section 246, is all able-bodied males between 17 and 45 who are citizens and female citizens who are in the National Guard. The types of militia include the organized militia and the unorganized militia. The organized militia is the National Guard and the Naval Militia. The organized militia is the National Guard and the Naval Militia. The unorganized militia is essentially everybody else. Basically, everyone is in the militia. In addition to the militia, the word "people" in the Second Amendment extends to every citizen when it states, "The right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." This is what the founders of the Constitution intended as they understood it. Preventing tyranny was their main concern. Amendment 10 of the Constitution also states that powers not delegated to the U.S. by the Constitution are reserved to the states respectively or to the people. This makes it clear that if something is not specifically delegated to government by the Constitution, then it is the right reserved by the people. Nowhere in the Constitution is any form of restrictions on firearms. Therefore, they are a right of the people. Even then, the right to bear arms is explicitly in the Constitution, and anything related is most certainly a civil right, one which governing officials have sworn duty to support. I hope this makes it clear that the board has the ability to stand up to the unconstitutional rights, and I hope you can make a bipartisan effort to protect the citizens of this county by declaring it a lawful Second Amendment sanctuary. Thank you for your consideration, and I also thank Austin. Austin has been really helping to educate a lot of us on this whole issue. I have three sons that served in the military. One is still serving in the National Guard here in Waterloo. And guns have been a big part of our family. They've brought my three sons home from deployments to Iraq and Afghanistan, and recently, one of my sons just got back from Qatar. So, this Second Amendment is very important to our family, and I think important to us citizens of Blackhawk County. Thank you for letting me speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is April Melton, and I am a resident of Ward 1 in Waterloo. The reason we were...
What's your address?
203 Westborne Road in Waterloo. And this might seem like an issue that's going all around the country for a variety of reasons, but the reason we ask you today to protect our rights is that there are currently four House resolutions being considered or have already been passed by Congress, including H.R. 127, which creates a national firearm registry that anyone, including every level of law enforcement and the military, can access. The registry would require one to tell the government exactly where one's firearms are stored. One would need a license to simply own a firearm. Mandatory psychological evaluations are required to receive this license. One would need to pay $800 for firearm insurance. It would enact extreme ammunition restrictions, including a ban on magazines of more than 10 rounds. Violating the above provisions could lead to a prison sentence of 40 years and a fine of up to $150,000. With H.R. 8, this bill would criminalize most private firearms transactions and expand background checks requirements. This bill has already been passed in the House. There is H.R. 1446. This bill would expand the federal waiting period for purchasing and obtaining a firearm from three to at least 10 days. This bill would be passed, has already been passed, in the House. H.R. 1808 and Senate Resolution 736, these bills would ban 205 specific firearms erroneously classified as assault weapons, along with other firearms meeting certain characteristics. Note, there is no definition of an assault weapon. The previous gun bills have been defined as assault weapons as semi-auto, which uses magazines, which include almost all handguns. Red flag laws, or extreme risk laws as proposed, provide the ability of authorities to confiscate firearms from anyone based on an accusation. Let's say I'm watching a football game and begin yelling at the TV. A neighbor who doesn't like me can call the police and say he heard shouting, and that might indicate mental instability, aggression, or assault. Under these... Under these red flag laws, my weapons could be confiscated. Can, we would really like for you to ensure that you'll stand up and protect our freedoms. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Brian Hanson, 815 Wildwood Road, Ward 2, Waterloo. I'd like to speak to the origin of the right of citizens to bear arms as rooted in holy scriptures. At first, I divert to the Declaration of Independence that says that our rights are endowed by our Creator. Thus, we see that rights are not created by man nor government. Rights can only be realized by and protected by government. This is the only way for everyone to be equally treated, and we are all subject to the same law. It is clear that the founding fathers concurred with modern scholars that the laws of ancient Israel were arguably a civil code as well as a moral code. The Sixth Commandment in the well-known Ten Commandments is mistranslated in the King James Version. It should not read, "Thou shall not murder." It should read, "Thou shall not murder," rather than "Thou shall not kill." In Exodus 22:2, we read, "If a thief caught in the act of breaking in is beaten to death, it is not murder." Thus, it is a clear, thus, it is clear that the right to self-defense and the defense of family is a fundamental right. The Hebrew words used in both texts are different and underscores the difference between premanitated murder and self-defense. Likewise, in Numbers, Book of Numbers, Chapter 1, the idea was not to have a standing army, but an armed citizenry ready to answer the call to a national defense. This is found in Article 1, Section 8 of the Federal Constitution. The idea of protecting the vulnerable and the innocent is repeated in the New Testament scriptures as well. In 1 Corinthians 13:7, love protects. In Mark, Jesus quotes the Old Testament, "Love your neighbor as yourself." The right to bear arms has a long history in English common law and should be well enshrined by a Second Amendment sanctuary resolution in Blackhawk County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
I'll try to keep it brief. Jeff Jacoby, 1207 Williston Avenue, Waterloo. Just wanted to conclude some of what we've spoken about here. It is clear the federal government has intentions to hinder and infringe on our constitutional civil right to bear arms. Permission required to exercise one's rights by definitions means that they are not a right at all. In response to these clearly unconstitutional acts, and I want to stress this, over 1,200 local U.S. governments, including multiple Iowa counties, have declared themselves to be lawful Second Amendment sanctuaries, prohibiting any federal acts that infringe on the right to bear arms within their jurisdictions. There are eight other counties around Blackhawk that will likely pass to a Second Amendment sanctuary. People looking to take refuge can easily leave Blackhawk, which would be very bad for tax revenue, here. Jasper, Harden, Buchanan, Grundy, Madison, and Siner Counties have passed or are considering declaring Second Amendment sanctuary. The sheriff of Blackhawk County has indicated he would support the same resolution that Harden County passed, if we make it our own. I think this board can utilize the Second Amendment sanctuary declaration here to promote mental health and firearm training, as mentioned earlier. It is clear that everyone in government at all levels are sworn to protect and uphold the civil rights to keep and bear arms, despite what any other body of government does. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope we can make a bipartisan effort to protect the people of this country by declaring our county to be a Second Amendment sanctuary.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks.
No?
Yolando.
Yes, sir. Yolando Lovelace, Ward 3, 3548 Mirfield Drive. As a concerned citizen, I would like to have that debate on this, this, what you guys are hearing. I just go back to January 6th. And so, the Second Amendment, people who want to defend it, right now, you can't even go onto an ammo store and buy ammo, because there's no ammo.
That's right.
And then, the guns, you can't buy guns, because a lot of those are off the shelves. I don't understand why do we need this particular cause when you can, you know, there's never been, I don't think I've ever heard anything where they're going to take people's guns away. And then, in particular, I heard one debate was that there's no name for an assault weapon. And I spent 30 years in the Navy. I know about assault weapons, and there are certain ones that don't belong on the streets of Waterloo. And then, I would just ask that the board be careful about Harden County. They don't have the population that Blackhawk County has, and they don't have the gun violence that Blackhawk County has. And so, just be careful about it. I think we should debate it, but why do we need something like that in place when there's no restrictions? And I don't think there ever will be restrictions, but there should be some restrictions on some of the guns that are out in the streets, that are killing a lot of our kids. I really do. And there's certain, there are certain guns that we saw in Iraq. I got shot at in Iraq. I spent a year in the desert. There are certain guns that we use for fighting wars, but not for shooting deer, not for shooting ducks. Those guns were never made for that. So, why do, why does a citizen need it? I want you to really look at that, because why do we need a high-capacity gun that shoots 75 rounds to go shoot ducks and bears and squirrels? I don't understand it. It was never intended for that, but all of a sudden, it's become one of those "I gotta have" kind of things, and it's really not. Those guns kill. People kill. Just wanted to leave that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Kent Larson, Ward 2, Cedar Falls, 4920 Key Sada Avenue. I wasn't going to speak, but after I heard Mr. Yolando, who I...
You're a respected citizen, by the way. Thank you.
You help my wife quite often. My wife is an 80% service-related disabled Air Force veteran combat myself. I'm a non-combat veteran from the Army Guard Reserves. I did not serve in a combat zone until I went back as a DOD contractor. So, we have signed the line to pay the price for these rights. So, I do feel that right now it is pertinent that I speak about this. He was comparing Harden County to Blackhawk County, the differences in populations. I'm going to give you an example. It happened five years ago while on vacation down in Arizona, where I had the legal right to carry, and I did. Both my wife and I were carrying. We were going down a street in a rather, I should say affluent neighborhood, on our way to a site to see the Echo House. I can't remember the name of it. Didn't prepare a speech, but didn't know I was going to speak. We were going to a Walgreens on a certain corner that we had located on Google Maps. Directly behind us was an unmarked sheriff deputy, and we got stuck behind someone through two lights right before we got to the Walgreens, because they kept riding down the center line. They were from out of state and didn't know where they were at. The deputy was in an SUV above us and could see what was going on. When we got to the light where the Walgreens was right in front of us, his cherries went on, we got out of the way, and he ran into the Walgreens. There was a shootout going on, not for the money of the Walgreens, but for the drugs. We pulled over, we ate, they shot the man coming out the back. When everything calmed down, I saw the deputy. I recognized him, because at the time, I was riding, so I could actually see who was driving behind us. I went over and had to discuss with him, telling him, "Hey, weren't you the guy that was right behind us? I described our vehicle from Iowa." He says, "Yeah, I was." He goes, and I told him what our intention was, was we were going to go to the Walgreens and then eat next door. And he looked at me straight away, and he says, "You do realize that if that fellow from Florida," he knew who I was talking about, "had gone through one of those lights before you, you would have walked into a shootout inside that Walgreens." The right to keep and bear arms as a citizen is not just for Harden County or Blackhawk County. It is for the citizens that can legally carry, that can protect themselves. Because had I been in Arizona, had I missed one light, and had I not been carrying and walked in that Walgreens, I would have never met my two granddaughters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. The last time I was here, I thought that it might be another 20 years before I showed up again, because we were talking about, I think, the Health Department budget, but here I am a year later. So, let me just introduce myself. My name is Joe Gordon. I know a little bit about this issue. I'm a professor emeritus in criminology from the University of Northern Iowa.
And your address, sir?
510 Wilshire Avenue. And at U&amp;I, I taught courses in gun violence. I taught courses in the sociology of homicide. Like some of the speakers here, I'm also a veteran. I was a military police investigation sergeant in the Army. So, and I'm also the state lead for the Iowa chapter of Brady United Against Gun Violence. So, on this issue, which is peculiar that it comes before this body, I would say, I think this is, at very best, a red herring, but really is probably more accurately described as a political stunt. And here's the, here's the main reason why. This body has nothing to do with gun laws. You are prohibited from passing any gun laws in this state. And I'll just, some of you are familiar with Chapter 724. And I'll just, if I could read this just for a second. I might correct the vision here. "A political subdivision of the state shall not enact an ordinance, motion, resolution, policy, or amendment regulating the ownership, possession, legal transfer, lawful transportation, modification, registration, or licensing of firearms, firearm attachments, or other weapons when the ownership, possession, transfer, transportation, or modification is otherwise lawful under the laws of this state." So, this is really, I mean, and I don't mean to be impolite, but this is really not your issue. You have, you have bigger and more relevant issues to deal with, as you know. Roads, bridges, public safety, and public health, and so on, so forth. So, we have to ask the question, well, why is this even coming forward today? Well, some of you may know, this resolution has its origins in the Blackhawk County Republican Party, where there was a resolution discussed, and then the effort brought through to the court from Mr. Treulke. And what's going on here is an effort to introduce a divisive wedge issue into a body that doesn't need that right now. You have bigger things to deal with than this red herring, okay? And I'm willing to debate it as well. In fact, I challenge anybody here who spoke up on behalf of this issue, and I heard some really, really inaccurate statements about emergency risk protection orders and assault weapons. I'll debate any of you in public, anywhere, anytime, on this issue, okay? So, I'm willing to have the debate, as this gentleman mentioned a while ago. I'm willing to have that discussion. But the main thing for now is to understand, this is, this is not, this is not something we have to be concerned about at the county level. The state of Iowa, somebody mentioned, has very, very loose gun laws, some of the loosest in the state. The Second Amendment is absolutely protected by Heller v. D.C. It is the law of the land. Now, even Justice Scalia, Chief Justice Scalia, who helped write that decision, pointed out, like any right, it's not absolute. You can't go into a theater and scream "Fire." It's First Amendment right. These laws are not absolute. The Second Amendment is not absolute. But whether it is or not, it's not something you can deal with, okay? You don't, you don't have anything to do with gun laws. So, if you want to be part of a political stunt, then this is, I guess, a good opportunity to do that, but I would encourage you not to. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff?
Well, good morning. I, I'll start by correcting a couple of inaccuracies. Number one, I'm the only person here that deals with the Second Amendment every single day, right? I'm the guy that issues gun permits, and we do it every day. We deal with it even after the change of the law in July, where it became constitutional carry. Thankfully, there's still, most of our citizens still continue to elect to pursue their permitting, because it's easier. It expedites their ownership and their rights that way. When I, number one, I appreciate the outreach and the opportunity to review the resolution that was passed by the Republican Central Committee, which I had great problem with. So, when I was presented with the Harden County resolution or ordinance, certainly, it was better. When you start telling me that I have to decide between ordinances, laws, locals, all these different provisional outreaches, as opposed to a very broad language, I start having problem, because much like the gentleman that was standing here in the doorway when Dan was talking about how he possessed his gun rights, that was a gentleman whose gun rights were taken away. And we've been down that road, and it gets a little sticky. It gets a little gray. It gets a little problematic. And so, when you start writing very finite detail into what the sheriff shall or shall not do, that falls squarely on my shoulders. So, given the option between a very broadly-written ordinance or one that says, "I shall not," or "I have to," or "I have to decide between a judge's order, because there's a domestic violence victim that needs protection, and a county ordinance that tells me I shall not infringe," where do I stand? What decision do I make? So, you put me in a precarious position. So, certainly, I prefer the more broadly-written language. At the end of the day, I don't necessarily disagree with Professor Gordon. I think this is probably a solution in search of a problem, because at the end of the day, never has the Second Amendment been more strong in the state of Iowa than it is right now currently, particularly with the passage of the language of the law that was passed in July. So... So, my encouragement to you is to think and deliberate quite hard on your actions with regard to this proposed ordinance. Certainly, we enforce your ordinances. That's also my charge. But if the question of the day is whether or not you are going to support your constitutional oath of office, whether or not I am going to support my constitutional oath of office, it doesn't take you passing an ordinance to require that of me. I raised my hand in 1998 to support and defend the Constitution of the United States. I deployed six times in support of that oath, and I've raised my hand three times now as your sheriff to support that oath. I don't need your ordinance to require me to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. More comments? Anybody on Zoom that would like to provide comment? Board members? Well, I'm going to make a resolution, or I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the Harden County resolution. Is there a second? It dies for a lack of a second. All right, on to Item 7Q, discussion in regard to county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19. Dr. Inmonye.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
If there's one issue that we all need to unite against, it's COVID-19. It just needs to go away and die. So, I think that's one of the biggest issues we need to tackle here in Black Hawk County. Just to give the Board an update, we continue to see an increase in our cases over the weekend. We had an uptake of 98 cases. Our numbers continue to increase. It's still, the majority of cases are still the 18 and above in the working age group. We still have, we're struggling with the 19 to 24-year-olds in terms of vaccination rates, so we're hoping that with the schools, the university reopening, and the vaccines available for them, we'll see an increase in that. We're also seeing something a little bit unusual, which is concerning for me, the increase in the 0 to 10-year-olds. And so, that started to increase. 9% of our current cases are the 0 to 10-year-olds, and so, with the schools reopening, we're just trying to figure out what more we can do. We have a youth event today from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. offering vaccinations, and also at the Cedar, it's at the Cedar Valley Sportsplex, and they've been kind to offer day passes for the youth. We're also doing another one on August 31st from 3:30 to 7:30. So, that's where we're at with COVID-19.
Where's, excuse me for interrupting, where is that one going to be at?
Yes, that one's going to be also at the Cedar Valley Sportsplex from 3:30 to 7:30. So, in terms of just COVID-19, also disease investigation, our county is still investigating, doing the investigations. The biggest concern that we have is with the schools starting back, how much capacity we'll have. But I think it's important that we do so that at least the school districts are aware of what's going on within their schools. So, that's where we're at with COVID-19. Any questions for me?
Are there, is there, are there numbers available for the age 12 and over group, and how many of those might be breakthrough cases?
Yeah, we don't release those numbers because of data suppression, so it might be smaller, and so, I can look into that, but if it's too small, I won't be able to follow. I'll just let you know due to data suppression, we can't.
Right now, it was on the news this morning by age.
Yeah. They had KOW this morning.
Yeah, it depends on which, like, for example, with our county, we follow the data suppression, so.
But it was all ages right up to 80.
Yeah. We have it in different categories. It's just if it's too small.
I did get vaccinated. I believe in getting vaccinated.
Thank you.
I believe it was rolling the dice, of course, but I have a deputy I worked with in Colorado. He did not believe in getting the vaccination. He's not expected to make it through the day. This monster is affecting different people in so many different ways. There were odds in getting the vaccination. I decided to take my chances, and I'm glad I did. I don't think it should be mandatory. I think we should have a choice, but I do believe in the vaccination, and I wish more people would get it. And I wonder what Pete is thinking right now. I wonder if he wishes he would have gotten it. So, I was supposed to visit him in November. I didn't because I didn't have time, and now I regret that. So, I've called it a monster all along.
We are, we will be, I'm sorry to hear that Supervisor Treoka. We will be also, I will personally be inside Tyson tomorrow to provide oversight of the vaccination process. Also, we're going to be providing informational sessions for team members. There's great concern about the workforce out there, and so, we are going to be in there just to support and provide some of that oversight. Unity Point will be doing the majority of the vaccinations out there.
When can we start getting our flu shots?
As soon as possible. We are working on that as fast as we can, so, thank you.
I would just say, on vaccinations, there's always lots to talk about personal liberty and personal freedom, but vaccinations are the collective path towards freedom from this virus, and it's something we all owe each other so we can move beyond this. I know that we're all sick and drained. We don't want to go backwards, certainly, and so, we just got to get out of this, and it's going to take everybody doing their part.
Any other discussion in regard to COVID and updates? All right, Item 8, any information from the Board?
Just let the people know, the 10th of September, starting at 3:00 in the afternoon till the 12th at noon, we'll be having vigil for Vietnam vigil that we've had, where 45 of my brothers died for this country, so.
And we are having interviews for the open position on the Public Board of Health. We are having three over the next two days. When the interviews conclude, we will bring our recommendation to the Board.
Yeah, we're still too shy on the Board of Adjustments, and that's important because it's a smaller board, and you could start getting down to a 2-1 vote, or we need to at least try to come up something for the Board of Adjustment.
All right. I'd like to mention, I guess this, I wasn't sure of the appropriate time, but the VA Commissioner Heidi Warrington had stopped in yesterday, and she wanted to be at today's meeting, but she said she had to be in St. Louis, and she wanted to acknowledge the great work that Yolando had done this weekend. And he was at the Irish Best, and obviously, she was very proud that he spoke to a group of about 200 and mentioned that his message was about service beyond what is done while in the military, but that when you go home, giving back to your community is important. And she said it was well-attended, well-received, and she just was very pleased to be there and a part of the group. But she also wanted to mention, too, and I think we saw the email earlier, about the crew members from the USS Iowa that had been at the Waterloo Cemetery on Kimball Avenue on Saturday cleaning the Civil War veterans' headstones and thanking him for that effort, too. So, I just thought I'd, I said I'd do that for her, so, thank you, Yolando.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the Board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.